This is the September 8th, 2020, meeting of the Needham Select Board. Good evening, I'm Mo Handel, Select Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will have public comment. First, we'll confirm that all members of the Select Board are present. Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Yep.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Here.
John Bullion?
Here.
I'll also note for the record that the Town Manager Kate Fitzpatrick and the Assistant Town Managers Katie King and Dave Davidson are also present. And Sandy Sincotta is staffing the meeting. Thank you very much, Sandy. For other, for anybody participating in this meeting, please beware that others may be able to see you. Anything you share a state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.Needham.gov unless otherwise noted. First item on our agenda is a public hearing for EverSource for grant of location on Linden Street.
Maureen.
Maureen, I'm sorry, I just, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. So my name-
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
My name is Maureen Carroll and I'm here on behalf of the EverSource Company. And I'm here on a petition, it's going to be on Linden Street. It's going to be Westerly from pole 38/3, approximately 192 feet north of Walnut Street. Distance of about 10 feet of conduit. To provide underground electric service to 29 Linden Street.
Thank you, Maureen. Kate, is everything in order on this application for grant of location?
Yes, it is.
Is there anyone here from the public who has an interest in this matter? Apparently not. Does anybody on the Select Board have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we come to the motion, Mr. Bullion.
Chairman, I would move that the Select Board approve and sign a petition from EverSource Energy to install approximately 10 feet of conduit in Linden Street. This work is necessary to provide underground electric service to 29 Linden Street.
Very good. Is there a second? Mr. Borelli, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? Then we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Maureen.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes. Matt, Mr. Borelli?
I didn't hear you vote, sorry.
Oh, thank you. The chair votes yes, unanimous. Thank you very much for that. That brings us to the second item on our agenda, which is a change of manager for Bertucci's Restaurant. Is there a representative for Bertucci's here? Mr. Sprague is, Mr. Sprague is present. This is for a change of manager. Mr. Sprague, would you like to address the board with respect to the application for a change of manager at Bertucci's?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions you all might have regarding change of management.
Okay, this is a fairly routine matter, which we do often. And is anyone from the board have any questions? Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, first, a question to the Town Manager is, we've got the complete application here. Is from the, from, in terms of technical compliance and your office's review, is this all in order?
Yes, Mr. Matthews, Sandy Sincotta did all the paperwork and it's all in order.
Then I wanted to ask, speak a little bit with Mr. Sprague. I guess my understanding is that business, Bertucci's clearly has confidence in you. You've had success in a number of different enterprises, but this is the first time that you've been a manager of a liquor license. Is that correct?
It's actually the second time. When I was with Grill Zone in Boston, we had a beer and wine license. I was on that at that time, but this will be the first time in quite some number of years that I have those, correct?
Okay, I saw that in your, I think I saw that in your resume, but it wasn't clear to me from that that whether there was alcohol involved. But you're saying that you're telling us there was. Well, that's good. I think the key thing here is, and I've seen that you've had the training and obviously been through the program with the, with the company. But you understand that when you become the manager, you become personally liable for anything that goes wrong in relation to the alcohol service at the premises.
Correct.
Okay, and where are you from originally anyway, Steve?
Born and raised in Ashland. Moved to Florida for about 10 years or so, and then back up. I live in Milford now.
Okay, so you're from, you're from the neighborhood originally?
Yes, born and raised.
Back in the day, there were a lot of towns that were dry.
Right.
Needham was one of them. So when we introduced alcohol here for restaurants, it was really, there were a lot of people that didn't think it was such a swell idea, but we thought it was necessary because there were a lot of people that did want it. And it was really necessary to have a good restaurant sector here. But it's important, and I, it's important to the folks here that we've, the businesses operate in a way that's consistent with the community, particularly around concerns such as over-serving or sales to minors. That the community insists that we, and our Board of Health is involved in insisting that we regularly check compliance, including sending undercover agents who might look like they're 21 into your business to see if they can get served alcohol without being asked for identification. And our, and our members of our community insist that we take a strict attitude with people that fail those tests, as well as more serious actions, in which case we would take very, we would take additional action against the business.
Sure.
Understand?
I do, and I agree with it 100%.
Okay, we just, we have had a lot of good people come in front of our board after having failing a compliance check. And we had to have some, some discussion and even impose penalties that are hard for the business and people that are working there. We want to be just crystal clear about this at the beginning. That understood?
100%, 100% heard and agreed upon. I have personal experience with drunk drivers killing a member of my family, so you, messages loud and clear. Understood.
Very good. So having, having said that in that way, I do want to say we're, we're, we're pleased to have you here in town. We want to wish you all success in your work at the business. Good luck.
And I appreciate that. You guys got to come in and have some pizza.
Thank you.
Just not on my list.
Does anybody on the board have, let me know.
Yeah, come on in, I'll get you a slice.
Matt Borelli?
Just in addition to that, the board did recently pass more stringent rules and penalties for alcohol violations. So just make sure that you're up to speed on what those are moving ahead. And again, welcome to Needham and look forward to seeing you at Bertucci's.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Look forward to seeing you guys come in, and ladies, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Mr. Bullion or Ms. Cooley, any comments, questions? Mr. Bullion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Board of Selectmen waive the sixth, section 6.4 of the Select Board's regulations for the sale of alcoholic beverages for Mr. Sprague, and approve and sign the application for a change in manager to Stephen Sprague for Bertucci's Restaurant Corporation, 1257 Highland Avenue, Needham, and to forward this application to the ABCC for approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that's unanimous. Welcome to Needham, Mr. Sprague. We wish you well here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again for coming in.
And best of luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bullion?
I would move the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to the Town Managers' Report. And Ms. King and Ms. Fitzpatrick are going to give us a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Katie King and I recommend that the board endorse the Charge of the United Against Racism Initiative working group, and also to appoint the inaugural members of that group. After the listening session in July, we had a discussion with the board and proposed that we create a working group to help guide the work that needs to get done and over the coming year. Helping to, helping us to create a vision for racial equity, helping us sift through the recommendations that have been made and help actually making recommendations along the way to the board in order to make progress in this area. So we have provided you with the charge and a list of 13 people who we have contacted who have expressed willingness to participate in this work. And we're very grateful for them for that. And we'd like to get the committee kicked off and have our meeting set up fairly soon.
Is there some way to share on the screen the names of the committee members, the proposed committee members? Or do you want to read them?
I could read them, sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mary Ann Cooley, Matt Borelli, Sue Neckus from the School Committee, Jen Howard from Human Rights Committee, Marcus Nelson from the Human Rights Committee, David Summergrad from the Needham Diversity Initiative, Jay Spencer from French Press, Ramin Abra Shamin from the clergy association, Vivian Chu, a resident at large, Dennis Zhang, a resident at large, Natasha Espada, a resident at large, Dr. Fiamy, resident at large, and Uluwetone Ajayi, a recent Needham High School graduate.
Thank you very much. Kate, is there any comment on this from anybody on the board? Ms. Cooley?
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Fitzpatrick and Ms. King for helping to work to put this committee together. I think it's a terrific committee and I think that there is work to do and we intend to undertake it carefully and thoughtfully. And I know that the committee, or the community, is committed to seeing how we can make Needham a better place.
Thank you. Matt Borelli?
And I would just echo those comments. And you know, looking at the list, we all know some of these people personally. And to get a group like this together, I think it's going to be a great benefit for the town and I look forward to working on the group. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews and Mr. Borelli, do either one of you have any comments or questions? John?
Yes, yeah, I'd like to say that I think this is, this is a great start. I think that when, as I look through the makeup of the committee, I know many of the people that are on this list and there are many others that I don't know. And, but I have, you know, in looking and, and speaking with the Town Manager about the individuals that are stepping forward to do this important work, I'm, I'm looking forward to the work product that comes from this, from this committee. And when you're ready, I would make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews, do you have anything to add?
Simply that we, this, this board has a lot of work is doing and has a lot of work to do this year and in the coming years on race equity issues. It's, it helps to have a broad range of experience and participation from people who are both in the community and some, and who have a range of experiences of their own, who can help inform this and help us move this forward, both for our committee and other agencies of the town government. I think the charge is carefully drafted, makes a lot of sense, and, and the committee composition. This is not, this is not work, work, easy work, as you said, these are not easy discussions. And it's not, it's got, not going to be easy at every stage, but it needs to be done. And I hope that this, this is the time to be doing it. And I hope that this will lead to some substantial progress.
Thank you. And I would only add that this problem of racism in our society affects every aspect of life in every community, even Needham. And it isn't just the work of this board or this committee. Every organization in this town has to look to itself to see where it can improve that situation and overcome years of entrenched racism that we've all become very used to. And some of us don't even see anymore because it's so inherent. So this is a problem that we have to solve. And I think the composition of the committee reflects a commitment to bring in as many aspects of our community into the discussion of the, as the work of that committee goes forward. So I would call for a motion. Mr. Bullion?
Would move that the Select Board approve the charge and composition of the Needham Unites Against Racism Working Group, contained in the recommendation dated September 8th, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Bullion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Matthews, seconds. That brings us to any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Thank you. Kate, that next item on the agenda is closing the special town meeting warrant. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's, we have two items with respect to the warrant. The first is the composition and closing the warrant. And then the second would be to ask the board if you wanted to take any positions on any of the articles. I wanted to let you know that there are a few changes from the draft version that was presented at the last Select Board's meeting. The Walker Lane sewer that was submitted by petition, which is proposed to, by the board, has more specific language, as I had indicated to you in August. So it does include the notion that the town, as required in the charter, that the town will pay 2/3 and the abutters will pay 1/3. And includes the updated amounts that, upon which the charge to the abutters will be made. We are, we did withdraw from the printed warrant the COVID-19 Economic Development Grant Program. We couldn't find a way yet to make that work within the confines of municipal finance law, but we will continue to work with all the ability that we have to help our local businesses. And we'll be thinking of different ways other than that program. Many communities who do it have community development block grant funds from the federal government. And Needham is not one of those communities, so we didn't have that tool available to us. The, the last version of the warrant included a citizens petition with respect to zoning, which it was a petition that was withdrawn by the petitioners in May and the board had agreed to put back on the special. And they had agreed to move that off to May again. So that is not in the warrant. And then finally, there's a new citizens petition since the last version of the warrant, submitted by Noah Mertz on behalf of Equal Justice Needham. The, the, as the board knows, the petition was certified by the town clerk with over 300 signatures. And since the certification, the petitioners have submitted a slightly revised version and asked that the board consider swapping out the language from the new version, from the version that was submitted on Thursday. And I would leave that to your discretion.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
In the, where the, Mr. Mertz has submitted language that is somewhat different than the language that had the 300 signatures for the petition. But it's clear that it's in the, within the area which the Board of Selectmen can respond to under our authority to insert citizens petition matter into the, into the, into the warrant. But where there is a difference, rather than quibble about, did the 300 signers approve this language? I'd like to offer a motion to insert the article, the article text provided by Noah Mertz to the Town Manager today into the warrant and mark that insertion and improve that insertion as by the Select Board at the request of Noah Mertz. That way, the most current version of the text that Mr. Mertz wants to go forward under will be printed in the warrant and can become the basis of, of discussion without quibbling about the technical requirements of being matched with the specific group of signatures that were submitted.
Thank you for the motion, Mr. Matthews. Is there a second to Mr. Matthews' motion?
Second.
Mr. Borelli, seconds. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. Mr. Matthews, you want to say something?
If I can, just, just to be clear, I know we're going to proceed at some point to discussion and recommendations on each of the articles in the warrant. And it should just be clear that by inserting this text into the warrant, that is not a position of the board. It's done as a convenience and a courtesy. And to bring this matter to the attention of town meetings, town meeting members as, so that they can act on it, consistent with the request of the petitioners.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Borelli, are we waiting to say something?
No, I do, Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify something, we're off this, right? We've already just, I'm talking about the warrant.
Yes.
That zoning article that was withdrawn by the proponents, I just want to make it clear, because I don't know if we did last meeting, that we intend to put that as a courtesy on the annual for the petitioners.
Right. These petitioners have, on two occasions, postponed their chance at town meeting at our request. So we will honor their intent of getting that onto the warrant the next opportunity, because we don't know what the COVID situation is going to be like in May as well. But at the earliest opportunity, we will insert that on the warrant, is our commitment to them. Mr. Matthews?
Just to follow up on what Matt said, and in the same way, I really appreciate the courtesy of the petitioners in withdrawing in this way so that we can facilitate this meeting. And I agree with, again, the board is a courtesy, should put this back in at the earliest time that we can, we can have a full town meeting discussion on it. But again, by inserting that, that is not the position of the board. And as, as we've discussed, there are points of view on the merits of that issue.
Okay, is there any other comments before we move to close the special town meeting warrant?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe you voted on the motion to include the-
Oh, to which the-
Mr. Matthews' motion to include the new text of the citizens petition? I think that should be-
Oh, we had, but maybe we didn't, did we?
You called the roll, you voted in favor, you just didn't say passes unanimously.
Motion passes unanimously, my error. Sorry, Kate, thank you for pointing it out.
And then it would be appropriate for the board to close the warrant for the October 4th special town meeting, subject to minor technical corrections to be made by Town Manager, Town Council, and Bond Council.
Thank you, Kate. This looks like Mr. Bullion wants to make that motion, unless I'm mistaken.
That the board, Mr. Chairman, that I would move that the board vote to close the warrant for the October 4th, 2020 special town meeting, subject to minor technical corrections to be made by the Town Manager, Town Council, and/or Bond Council.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, which makes it unanimously adopted.
And it's a reminder, Mr. Chair, to everyone watching, this is a Sunday afternoon town meeting. Another first.
In the same location where the May town meeting was, which is the Harking Lot at Memorial Field.
Yes.
Thank you, Kate. That brings us to-
To a review of the warrant and the warrant articles?
Yes.
We do not have a recommendation for you yet on Article 1 for the amending the operating budget. But I do believe the property sex assistance program is ready for vote if you so choose.
All right. Does anybody want to propose a motion to take a position on Article 2?
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend adoption of Article 2.
Second. There is, there is a motion and a second? Miss, come to the, any discussion on the motion? No. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous. So that motion is to support the warrant. Article 3, Kate?
We do not have a recommendation for you yet on Article 3.
Okay, Article 4.
Mr. Davidson is going to give you a brief description of the content of the article.
Okay, thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Davis. Is he present?
Yes. He's getting moved in, I'm sure.
I'm having trouble locating-
He has his hand up in the room.
He's an attendee, Sandy? Yep. I am an attendee. I'm not seeing him.
He's right at the top.
He's at the top, there we go, okay, sorry. He's on his way.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave, you patience.
Welcome, Dave. The floor is yours with respect to Article 4.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and if I could also have Roger McDonald join us, Director of MIS.
Of course. We'll wait till he comes on. Hi, Roger, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The appropriation request for billion collection software replacement, this was an article that was on the annual town meeting warrant. But at the request of the town, we postponed action on this in order to shorten the warrant to be acted upon back in June. The reason that you're seeing this here for October, rather than waiting until the next annual town meeting, is an issue of timing. Other than I, the main participants on the town side, the Director of IT, the Treasurer Collector, the Town Accountant, the Town Assessor, representatives and public works, did not want this withdrawn because of the urgency of getting a replacement package. We have a billing system that is over 30 years old and it is no longer supportable. And we've been advised to that effect by the company that owns the product, that they intend to phase it out. A couple of points is the software that we have is, is a COBOL product. And one of the difficulties is finding people who are writing COBOL and, and are able to support the program. Secondly, the issue is the ability to interface with other applications is becoming more and more difficult and also very time consuming. A very simple process that we've been asked, even by members of the board, is the ability to pay property taxes online. We're not able to do that with this application because it's, it's not exportable information to display online. So that's just one of the limitations of it. And the last major concern actually came up this year when we were trying to generate the tax bills. In addition to all the issues that we had in preparation for getting the bills out, we actually had a Y2K issue. Yeah, did not miss here that it was Y2K. Again, think back, this is a COBOL product. And to make a long story short, basically, the company that, that we have the product from did not think there would be anybody still using this application in 2020. Both Roger and I will answer any questions members of the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Does anybody have any- Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Borelli and then Ms. Cooley.
Yeah, thank you, and I understand from even past years that this was, this day would come, and it's been a difficult, you know, difficulty, as you talked about recently. My question, as far as the upgrades that we're going to see, I know one was just mentioned about being able to pay online, but as far as productivity, is there any other benefit that we're getting, besides, of course, we do need it, you know, because it's obsolete, but are we going to see anything on the town side for ease of use, or less staff time, or other things that can be done to make it more data that we can take in? Just trying to see if there are any other benefits.
The, an analogy I made is you have a 30-year-old car, and if you buy a new car today, basically the primary purpose of that automobile is for transportation, and the primary purpose of our replacement application will be to do billing, billing in the area of property taxes, billing in the area of business taxes, billing in the area of excise taxes, billing in the area of water and sewer, billing in miscellaneous receivables, as well as over-the-counter transactions. Since we do not have a product yet, that procurement cannot begin until we have an appropriation, the specific enhancements that might come with any new package, it won't be known until we purchase a product. But certainly, we will have a product that will be able to interact with more applications. It'll certainly be more understandable and less clunky for our younger workers who are unaccustomed to working with such an old application. In fact, we have a number of employees that weren't even born when this application was created. So there's certainly those benefits. In terms of the background and infrastructure, I would defer to Roger McDonald, if there's anything you'd add to that, Roger.
Yes, there would certainly be some savings in time on the backend, because the piece of hardware is, it's effectively, it's an AS400, IBM AS400, which is, it's been around for a long time, it has, it's a different operating system than what we're used to seeing. Sometimes upgrades can take anywhere from eight to 12 hours of sitting around and waiting for someone to call you up during the process of the upgrade and ask you to push a tape in. We're still doing backups with tapes, physical tapes, that we transport, we have a copy in town hall, and another copy at another location within town as backups, and there's certainly a lot of, there's definitely a lot of, you know, background, background in the administrative side of the hardware, where we'd certainly see some savings, even things as simple as printing, because printing on this device, the AS400 that we're using, requires a totally different concept in printing, and oftentimes requires sometimes two or three people just to get a printer going and get reports out. So it would bring, you know, changing the application and the hardware itself would bring us really right up to, you know, modern standards of using, you know, using these hardwares and the technologies and the applications that are there to support them. And to Dave's point too, it is, it is becoming harder and harder to find support for just the programs that have been written for it. You know, we've had several instances over the past several years where we've had to wait a couple days, three days or so, to find, actually find somebody locally who can help us to, you know, to look through some of these programs and help us, you know, maybe change some code on specific lines, and just things that just don't work when upgrades happen. So I think that on the IT side, specifically supporting it, there'll be significant savings of time and energy on the backend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cooley?
So I actually don't have a question, I just want to say that I'm 1,000% in support of this, I would even support an emergency preamble if we needed it, I'm in favor of it being done yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, can we have a motion to support Article 4?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Did I leave anybody out other than me?
You.
Me, okay, the chair votes yes, so it's unanimous? Thank you. Appreciate your work. So we vote to support that. That brings us to, thank you. That brings us to Article 5, transportation improvement fees.
Mr. Chair, this is the appropriation required for the funds that are provided to us, Commonwealth, for the Uber and Lyft rides that originate in Needham. We are still prioritizing bicycle and pedestrian safety initiatives, we are still pursuing ways to provide cover for bike racks at the stations as our first priority, and essentially with the few articles that we've appropriated, hoping to get that off the grounds.
Thank you. If there's no objection, is there a motion?
Move we adopt?
Second.
Borelli seconds, any discussion? Brings us to the vote, Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, that's unanimous, to support Article 5. That brings us to Article 6, which we've heard presentations on. If there are no objections, is there a motion to approve or the support of this article?
Move we adopt?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Again, this is a motion to change the zoning in Avery Square to allow for a modification to the building to allow for a continuation of its essential uses, serving the housing needs of elderly and others. That brings us to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous, to support Article 5. And then Article 6 is a map change that goes with that article?
Article 7.
I'm sorry?
Article 7 or Article 7?
Oh, I beg your pardon, Article 6 was what we just voted, Article 7, thank you.
Yep. Move we support adoption of Article 7?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, made and seconded? Come to the vote, Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, that's unanimous, to support Article 7. That brings us to the Walker Lane Sewer article that Ms. Fitzpatrick described earlier, Article 8. Is there any reason not to vote this article this evening?
No reason.
Hearing none, we come to a motion. Mr. Bullion?
I would move that we vote to adopt support, support Article 8.
Second, Mr. Borelli seconds, that brings us to, any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, so that's unanimous, to support Article 8. That brings us to appropriate for emergency, I'm sorry, to rescind dead authorization, Article 9.
Move we vote to support?
Second.
Any discussion? Brings us to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that's unanimous on Article 9 to support. That brings us to appropriate for emergency rental assistance program, Article 10.
Mr. Chair, the CPC has not voted on which articles to push to the warrant, they vote on the 16th, so it may be best to hold the board's recommendations until your next meeting.
All right, so is there any objection to holding our recommendation on all the CPC articles until our next meeting? Mr. Borelli?
Mr. Chair and Mrs. Fitzpatrick, will we have someone from the CPC available for questions at that meeting or family?
Absolutely.
That's a reasonable request, we should do that.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to...
Mr. Handel?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering too, will we, so I understand that the CPC hasn't voted, have the underlying orgs that are related to these issues, say the Historical Commission, the Housing Authority, have there been any votes by those bodies as it relates to the articles in their area?
Can anyone answer that question?
I believe the Housing Authority voted to support the emergency rental assistance, Katie, is that correct? Yes.
And then the historical articles, has the Historical Commission met or taken a position?
I will find out.
Okay, thank you, we'll have that information for the next meeting.
Okay.
Any other concerns or questions about these articles before we move on without taking a position on them?
I would say, Mr. Chair, also that the CPC hasn't finished its work, but I do know that the Parker Recreation Commission is very supportive of both Plaxton and the Defazio projects.
Okay, excellent. Mr. Matthews, you had a question or comment?
I think, I'm kind of in the space of thinking, when we get the recommendations of the CPC committee, those are going to be binary decisions for us, yes or no, as to whether or not to support their recommendation.
That's correct.
For example, in the case of one of the items, I believe it was the requested amount on the church steeple, there was some difference of opinion as to where there's going to be a sharing of the cost between the church and the CPC fund, depending, that there was, there were some range of opinions on what the appropriate level of funding was. I think that it's important that there be an appropriate sharing, I'm not sure I want to substitute my judgment for that of the CPC committee, which I know is going to look at that issue. I'm just trying to figure out the right way to frame that.
Well, shouldn't that be taken to them, because don't we have an up or down on these articles? We cannot amend them. They go to town meeting for an up or down vote, they cannot be amended on the floor of town meeting.
Perhaps those members of the CPC committee has had its hearing, maybe members who are concerned about the dollar values of those might speak to the liaisons that the CPC committee has assigned before the CPC committee takes its vote, which I believe will be next week.
Yes, so anybody who has an interest in that matter should convey their interest to the CPC committee before they take their vote, since we won't have the option after they take their vote. That gets us through Article, which?
To 17.
16. Brings us to the citizens' petition. I don't know if there's any desire to take a position on this article this evening, or should we defer until our next meeting?
The language just come in this afternoon, it may be best to hold this one until the next meeting.
Okay, so we will defer our action on Article 17, the citizens' petition, to our next meeting, by which time we will have had time to review the article. That brings us to committee reports, I believe?
I think one more.
Brings us to your update, Kate, I'm sorry.
Great. Just three quick things, Mr. Chair. The first is, I just wanted to note, the superintendent was on your Zoom meeting in August, talking about both the race equity work that the schools have been embarking on, but also the school opening planning, and I just wanted to note for the board, how many staff on the so-called town side of government in health, public works, building maintenance, including Dave, Katie, and I, also Cindy, I'm probably leaving somebody out, are spending hours and hours a week just really trying to support that effort, particularly the building maintenance folks, and I just wanted you to have an understanding of, opening the schools for in-person learning is our number one priority, and that is continuing to be where we put all of our effort, and we're doing, we're doing everything we can to support the superintendent and the school committee on that, so I wanted to...
If I may, Ms. Fitzpatrick, I think it's very important for the public to understand just how much effort has to go into making sure that it's successful and safe, both on the town side, and for the incredible work also being done on the school committee and the school department side. This is a major undertaking, and it's very time consuming and very stressful. So I think we all owe a debt of appreciation to our town staff, and to the school department staff, and the school committee as well, for them dealing with this very, very difficult issue.
Exactly.
Thank you, Kate.
Second, after the very successful dine-around meeting initiative in August, we have two more coming up, one next week on the 16th, and one on October 14th, from 6 to 9, and this is where local restaurants participate in having lower-cost tasting plate options, and it was reported to us that many of our restaurants sold out all of their offerings, and so it seemed to be a very successful endeavor, so we were very excited to be able to offer that again next week, and then again in October.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report, Kate?
One more item, Mr. Chair.
Okay, no, I'm, that's fine.
I just wanted to give the board an update, that in the matter of the incident that occurred outside the CVS that the board has had conversation on over the summer, we are very close to signing a contract with an outside investigator, as the board had asked, and we will be able to make an announcement about that very soon.
Thank you, and that's an issue of great concern to all of us, so thank you for that work. Mr. Matthews?
There are so, there are so many issues, I've had occasion to be working with the Mass Municipal Association, the Selectments Association, on some of their programming this summer, and when you, when you look at the issues, some of the issues that the town manager is reporting to, on to appear, towns that are working on the difficult issues involving how and whether, and in what way to open schools and meet the needs of the kids and the families in each town, and all of the complexity of that, every town is in a different situation, faces different challenges, and they're all struggling at that. And then we were also talking about diversity, race, and inclusion issues, including the manager referred to a difficult question that we're speaking, of looking into, incident that we had in Needham, in which people were questioning practices and the role of our police here, what kind of changes or adjustments, if there are things that we ought to change, and the current pending legislation that the state affecting both the question of how to deal with issues in schools, and how to deal with COVID crisis and epidemic, as well as the question of revisiting and looking at what kind of changes need to be made in response to health making and race equity issues across the state. They're really, we're in this pandemic where we're sitting in our little, you know, Hollywood squares boxes, trying to sort this stuff out, but people I hope understand how hard and seriously all of the people involved in town government are working on issues, doing all the stuff that they have to do every day, and working on some serious challenges that have to meet that are over and above what we all work on. Thank you.
Thank you for reminding us of that, Dan, and also, everybody in the society is under a great deal of stress at the same time, making all of these issues much more current and demanding. Mary Ann?
Well, and I was just going to observe, taking it sort of from the macro, the work that the board is doing to the micro, I returned from a weekend away to find that the Black Lives Matter sign in front of my house and a neighbor's house were taken this weekend. So, you know, it continues to be something that certainly has challenges within the community, and it will be a discussion, and hopefully we will all be able to hear each other.
Right, and we also had vandalism on the sign, thanking our first responders at Eaton Funeral Home, so we all need to be willing to listen to each other and respect the fact that everybody doesn't have the same opinion on every issue. Matt, did you want to say something?
No, I just, to that, you know, we're one community, and with different voices, and we just need to come together in many, many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, I didn't mean to rush you through your report, and thank you very much. Do you have anything else? Kate, any, do you have anything else?
You should not rush me, and no, I don't have anything else.
Okay, thank you. I do have two committee reports. One of them is, there is a town common, committee for the renovation of our town common, Ed Olson, from our Department of Public Works Town Forestry, will be coming in next month with Bob Mackey from Beta Corporation, they are guiding us through all of the alternatives we have to greatly upgrade and restore the beauty of the common, and they'll be presenting some of the conclusions that we have reached so far. The committee includes representatives from the Historical Commission, our board, the Department of Public Works, and... and landscape architects and citizens coming up with a way to make the common both physically up to date with respect to the maintaining of the surfaces and the lawns and also configuring it to better serve the purposes of everyone who uses that common, which as we all know has been put to great use this summer and into the fall. It is extremely well used, very appreciated. And it is both the public and to a small extent a private effort to improve the, the ambience in the common. So that's a great thing, and they'll be in, in October to talk to us. Lastly, I was at a Zoom webinar this morning at the Chamber of Commerce talking about how to do a buy Needham drive, that they're preliminarily calling it 100 days. And they will be focusing on trying to get the word out to shop local and they've got some very imaginative ideas on how to stimulate both awareness and incentives for people to shop locally. So we'll be hearing more from them and that's a good, that's a good thing. Are there any other committee reports? Any other items for discussion? Hearing none, we come to a motion to adjourn. Mr. Bullion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so that's unanimous, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.